Regional Planning Commission. Ms. Ellender will do the implication, how we'll do the pledge.
Lord, please support us in this planning meeting. We ask your divine help in this difficult task of representing all the issues before us. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Let's leave this to the pledge.
United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, with the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Bergord, Dr. Cluche, Ms. Ellender.
Here.
Mr. Falk.
Here.
Reverend Gray. Mr. Liner.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Sudier.
Here.
Mr. Thibodeau. We have a forum.
Thank you, ma'am. Conflict disclosure. I remind the commissioners at any time tonight, if a conflict of interest arises or is recognized to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and recuse him or herself from participating in debate, discussion, and/or voting on the matter. Does anyone have anything to disclose at this time?
Yes, I'm going to accuse myself from old business, 1A.
Okay. All right, item D, acceptance of the minutes, the Home of Terrebonne Regional Planning Commission minutes for the regular meeting October 21st, 2021.
I move we accept the minutes from the regular meeting of October 21st, 2021.
We have a motion by Ms. Ellender, second by Mr. Sudier, to accept the meeting minutes from October 21st, 2021. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E, Ms. Ellender.
I move we approve remittance of payment for the November 18th, 2021 invoices, the treasurer's report of October 2021, and the amendment to the 2021 budget.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Ellender, second by Mr. Rogers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F, communications, letter from Mr. Rembert. Land survey is dated November 2nd, 2021.
Yes, sir. We have a letter, November 2nd, 2021, from Ken Rembert. Dear Chris, please let this letter serve as a request to allow the above item to remain on the table indefinitely. And I'm sorry, this is old business item Emerson Lakes Phases Three and Four. Becky, which, which old business item?
It was removed before the agenda was set.
Okay, so it didn't get printed on the agenda?
Correct.
Got it.
Okay.
So.
Item G.
So since it wasn't on the agenda, then no action needs to be taken. Okay.
Right. Item G.
I move that we take the old business.
Motion by Ms. Ellender, second by Mr. Liner, to take old business off the table. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number one, Evangeline Oaks subdivision process C, major subdivision, conceptual and preliminary. Mr. Waits.
Good evening, David Waits, 78, 39 Park Avenue, representing Evangeline Business Park, LLC. This, this is a residential subdivision located at the end of Rue des Affaires in Gray, which is just south of HL Bourgeois and Southern Estates, off of Highway 24 North. Like I said, in Gray. And I'm going to go ahead and reserve my comments till after public has a chance to.
Okay.
Comment on.
All right. Anyone from the public here on this matter? Name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Jason Hutchinson, 314 Wayside Drive. I'm the principal of Covenant Christian Academy, which is a school located on Rue des Affaires. And from a technical standpoint, is it my understanding that one of you recused yourself from this vote tonight? Therefore, Mr. Chairman, do you even have enough people to make a vote tonight?
Yeah.
The majority?
In a majority. You have, how many on the council? I'm just curious. I'm going to make sure. Roger, thank you, sir. Okay.
Total.
So that my role in this matter, I'm obviously here to speak on behalf of my school. For the record, I have been the principal of Covenant Christian Academy now for eight years. And in that time period, I did the calculations today, and I've calculated that I have personally assisted with traffic flow for over 500,000 cars in the last eight years. We have about 500 cars that enter and exit the school in the morning and in the afternoons. It's my understanding that the goal of, the recommendation tonight might be to join two subdivisions together with the street that will connect Southern Estates to what is now the Evangeline Parkway. That's what I am here to discuss and talk about. I know safety, street, I should say traffic, studies have been done. I've read those studies. My concern at this point, and I'm hoping there are some families here from the new subdivision, I'd hate to think that such an important decision is going to be made that could affect their subdivision, and then there's no one here to speak on behalf of that. My concern is that the traffic, as well as the study was, is totally, at this point, incomplete because it does not figure in a full subdivision. And right now, and Mr. Waits might be able to speak better on this than I can, it's my understanding that's going to, they're hoping to have a close to 450, maybe 540, I'm getting those numbers crossed up, houses when the subdivision is built. So the traffic devices that were used to measure this study, again, do not take into consideration having that subdivision full. And I think my hope would be, at the very least, we would just slow ourselves down on this decision. Now, listen, I will yield to what the neighbors want to do. I want to be a good neighbor. They knowingly built their homes at the backside of a school boulevard. I am knowingly looking to purchase land across the street from that boulevard to put a football stadium in the future. So we're going to have to obviously be good neighbors to one another. My only concern, though, again, is, is the amount of traffic that's potentially going to be added in once the subdivision is finished. And by the way, if you've been there, houses are going up like crazy right now. So I would hope that whatever the decision is made, that it's just given some thought to what this is going to and how this is going to impact four or five years from now when the rest of these homes are finished. And that's all I have. Obviously, I manage the traffic. I want it safe for both the neighbors and the kids that potentially are going to be going across the boulevard. Because right now, we do cross the boulevard every day with children to go into what is our PE field. And we have five and a half, seven and a half acres that has been perched directly behind the school that butts up to the backside of the subdivision that's being built. We love having the subdivision there. We think it's a great thing. It's progress for our community. So I'm, this bittersweet, this conversation. I just think at this point in time, any traffic studies or any concerns are a little premature because, again, these studies did not include a full subdivision. I know that because I saw when they put the black strips down. I'm there every day leading traffic. The second concern I have, and it's not really a concern, it's just going to be a comment. I imagine that safety in the two subdivisions is going to be an issue to have two methods of address or exit. But I would guarantee you, if you happen to take a look at a satellite today, between Southland Mall and HL Bourgeois, there are numerous subdivisions on both sides of that bayou that only have one way in and one way out. So let's be consistent, let's be smart, and maybe just table this for a little while. I know you guys are going to do what you got to do, and I will support that decision because that's who I am and that's what I'm about. But I had this opportunity. Thank you, first of all, for all listening to me, and, and God bless you and good luck in your decision making tonight.
Thank you, sir. Second call, public. Third and final call, public. Motion by Mr. Rogers, second by Ms. Ellender, closed public. Call in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion pa, any, any names? I'm sorry. Motion pass. Mr. Waits?
Yes. With that being said, as far as the school, we have done a traffic analysis, had one done by a firm out of Baton Rouge. And we are going to do a DOTD permit for the street extension and, and for the intersection of 24. And that will be done at, as far as the DOTD permit at the engineering phase. We're proposing 235 lots on this next phase. And the owner and developer is looking not to tie in that back cross street. It's shown as not being tied in as of that plat, we have it right there, because of the issue with safety. Because Rue des Affaires lines up with the cross street and Southern Estates doesn't. And he's afraid that everybody from the neighborhood is going to try to come down that street in order to utilize the cross bridge instead of having to go back to the north a quarter mile and come across another bridge and double back, coming to Homa. And, and that's all we were worried about was, was, number one, safety for the school and following with, with, with the developer wishes for that, for that consideration. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting conceptual preliminary approval for a major subdivision process C to create 235 lots of record for single-family residential use. The proposed conceptual and preliminary application is another addition to Evangeline Estates and Park Evangeline subdivision along Rue des Affaires Street off of West Park Avenue. The lot configuration and layout meet parish subdivision regulation standards with the exception of proposed development not tying into the stubout on Sugar Creek Street in the neighboring subdivision, Southern Estates. Staff maintains the, the position that the Evangeline Oaks should tie into the stubout. The intent behind Section 24.7.6.3.1 regarding cross streets is to maintain connectivity between the properties. The proposed development will increase the average daily trips at the intersection of Rue des Affaires and Highway 24 from 2,226 to 4,600. This many lots accessed off of what is essentially a single cul-de-sac is inherently dangerous in an emergency situation or disaster, and the connection to Sugar Creek Street would help mitigate some of the load. Furthermore, an increase of this amount at an intersection with a state highway that experiences congestion at school drop-off, pickup times, not to mention future football games, warrants DOTD's input in the event improvements are required. It's recommended that a DOTD traffic study or some sort of documentation from DOTD concerning the increase in ADTs be provided. This can be done at the time of the engineering phase. The public hearing sign notice was posted on the property and all adjacent property owners have been notified with no calls received. Their subdivision will be curb and gutter drainage and tied into the community sewer but have not received service availability letter from Terrebonne Parish Pollution Control. All other utility letters have been received. Staff recommends conditional approval provided the dismissal of a service availability letter from Terrebonne Parish Pollution Control and the layout be reconfigured to tie into Sugar Creek Street. Now, that tie-in is going to change or potentially impact the ADTs and DOTD's traffic study, which is why we're.
So, I guess my question is. The, isn't there a subdivision on the other side of the, there's a current development underway, there's another subdivision on the other side that doesn't have a school on it?
Well, okay, if you're looking at the plat here, the school is, and Highway 24 is off here over to the left.
Okay.
Right? Then you have the school at the corner, and then you have the boulevard coming down. On the north side of that boulevard, it was initially, I believe, a commercial development. Is that right?
That's right.
And then it went back and they re-divided it into smaller lot residential, single lot residential. Then on the south side of the boulevard, this just came through, it's under construction right now. It came through, I believe, early part of this year for a single-family residential subdivision of a, what, 150 or so lots, something like that?
I believe so, 140 something.
Something like that.
Somewhere in that range.
Yeah. So, you know, in a quick, short amount of time, you know, the average daily trips increasing out here at the intersection with the highway are, are going to go up and up. But, you know, things seem to be worked out with the, the development that's already there and the development currently under construction. But this additional phases, I mean, we're talking 235 lots. That's, you know.
That's on a new phase.
Quite a bit.
The new phase.
Correct. So there's this, there's an existing drainage canal that runs right here.
Mm-hmm.
So, so this development would occur on the east side of that canal. Right now, it's just vacant land. Well.
And.
I mean, that's what it looks like now. That's the end of the road as it is today looking east.
And, and the boulevard up to that point.
Uh-huh.
Is a four-lane.
Yeah.
Boulevard. It's, it's double lanes on both sides.
So the, the, on the, on the last picture, you had the 240, was it 240, 240 houses, you said? 240 lots?
Yes.
For the, the proposed phase, 235.
Is there anything going to be developed at the rear of this as well?
No.
I think it's too, I think it's wet and.
It.
Back here, you're talking about.
That's correct. That's going to be a.
Okay.
Drainage pond, retention pond.
Yeah.
Dirt pond.
Like, if you've ever been to the back of, of, of Southern Estates, you know, it's, it's wooded, and then it gets pretty wet towards the far back. And then what's the drainage canal way to the east of all that? Yeah.
And there's one entrance into this neighborhood right now?
There's one entrance. It is a boulevard, so, you know, it's two lanes and two lanes, but.
Right.
There's still one intersection at the.
There's one entrance at, at Evangeline Oaks, there's one entrance at Southern Estates, and there's one entrance at North Park, all adjacent to each other.
Okay, yeah, I'm just. Principal brought up an, an issue about traffic with the school, and I'm just wondering how much, how many people we have living in this development with one exit, and then we're going to, if we tie into another neighborhood, how much more traffic are we actually going to put on that street?
If it were 235 homes, and if it were two cars per home.
Well, yeah, it's, it's 10.06 trips per day is the formula.
Per lot.
Per house. Yes, sir. So, I mean, Mr. Waits, I mean, he, he mentioned, you know, and he has a good point, too, that, yes, you know, Southern Estates, it too has one point of ingress egress. And then there's not a bridge directly across from it. You got to go up to, is it Brave?
The next, next bridge, I would think.
The next bridge.
Somewhere in the range, close to HL Bourgeois.
Or is it the one before that?
Whittfield is the one that winds up with Rue des Affaires.
Right, but the next one, that's Brave. Okay, so, right now, anybody leaving Southern Estates who wants to go towards Homa has to go north on 24 and make a U-turn at the bridge and then come back down. So if this were to tie in, yes, there certainly is the ability for somebody to come from Southern Estates subdivision through this proposed development and exit onto 24 and not have to go north to turn and go south. They could just cross the bridge directly.
It would be more advantageous to use the new neighborhood than the current neighborhood.
Well, that's, that's part of the concern, too, is this might be more attractive. And actually, the ADTs, look, the, the 4,600 ADTs, that's just that subdivision.
Correct.
So if you tie it in, you're going to increase, potentially increase that number even more. But that's what the DOTD study is going to have to take into account if.
And you're also dealing with a school.
With that tie-in.
And, and you're also dealing with a school that's going to grow in population throughout the years as well.
And, and, and they use both sides of the boulevard right now. So they cross the boulevard at that. Yes.
I mean, I know we've heard Mr. Wayne talk about, you know, acceleration, deceleration lanes, but this, this type of development, I mean, I'm not saying I know what DOTD is going to do. I don't, I mean, we've sent, we sent this to them as a courtesy, but I don't think, no, no formal application has been submitted to DOTD for their study, do you know? You have?
It has, okay.
Okay. So we haven't heard back. So, I mean, we don't know what they're going to come back with. I mean, they could want a signal. I mean, we'll, we'll have to wait and see.
You're talking about the traffic light at the intersection?
Correct, yeah. Or DOTD may say, they may make a recommendation not to tie in to Southern Estates. You know, they might make recommendations for improvements at the intersection, but they could also, DOTD could also come back and say, you know, that they'd prefer not tie in, but it's, we don't know.
It's our contention with the developer is that we're going to follow what DOTD tells us to do.
Right.
Under the engineering phase. It's just that, this is the added traffic that we've got to deal with, with the consideration if we do tie into Southern Estates. And that's just the whole gist of it because they, they feel like now wherever that back neighborhood street is going to have to come all the way around, and it's just going to be a, a, a through street.
I, I think it's logical. I think certainly those Southern Estates lots that are close to that point may do that. But, I mean, depending upon where you're coming from, that isn't exactly the easiest subdivision to get from the north end to the south end on anyway. It still may be easier just to go out the old way.
And I guess.
And make the U-turn at the bridge.
If you live at the rear of the property, I guess when you're coming home, it would be more advantageous to take the boulevard down and shoot in through the back, I would assume as well.
I mean, there's no way to say, well, you, only Southern Estates, you know, Southern Estates folks can't come in here. You can't.
No, no, I understand that. No, I'm just.
It's, it's no good answer. We're just trying to.
I'm just looking at it from.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's why kind of the decision ultimately.
What's the purpose of the tie-in? The pros and cons, you know, on either side, you know?
My, my, my concern wi, with respect to the tie-in, I mean, certainly I'm a proponent of interconnectivity. It, it just, you know, whether you're talking about commercial or residential, it just, generally speaking, it, it helps more than it hurts. My greater fear with this particular one, though, is just all of those lots all coming out on that one street. And if something happens in that street, whatever it might be, that's a lot of people who have no way to get out. Or if somebody has a medical emergency, no way for somebody to get to them. It's scary.
And I understand that, and I, and I respect that. I just think that being a boulevard, being a four-lane road, chances are you're not going to be blocked. But if, if you do have anything, people are not going to be coming in from, from, from Evangeline Oaks into, into. Southern Estates.
Let me, let me ask a different question. The entrance to the, the adjoining neighborhood, is it the same width of the entrance to this neighborhood?
No.
No. So, and I don't think we pointed that out, but this is where Sugar Creek Street is right there. So it's in that back corner. So.
No, I'm talking about from the highway.
No. You have a little boulevard section just at the front, but it's not like the full length like Rue des Affaires is.
Yeah, it's, it, yeah, it's a boulevard right at the entrance, and then before, once you get past the entry sign, the neighborhood sign and the boulevard, then it comes into one two-lane street, and then it, it tees up.
Not even that.
And you go, you either go right or go left. And there's more development if you go to the left, to the north side, because there's Southern Estates Park or.
How many, how many residents they have in the neighborhood?
Parks at Southern Estates.
How many residents are in the neighboring subdivision?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
How many?
And Southern Estates and the park is about two different.
Okay.
So, that whole subdivision, yeah, about the same size. But, you know, this one is has a, another, you know, couple hundred lots in, in front of it.
Putting that connection in between, I mean, like you said, if we were, what state coming into, into play? What are the states that, you know, we don't, we, the traffic state we come up with, we don't justify in light, and you made that connection. How are you going to, how, how's that boulevard going to handle that traffic? You're really going to create an issue there?
Another thing you do have to consider is this subdivision is on the other side of the CCC as well as the Sugar Creek connection. So if something happens to those culverts either in Southern Estates or in this development, where the people can't cross the CCC because the culverts have collapsed, you're going to have an issue if people can't get home or leave home.
Well, you're still crossing with the boulevard. You still have two, two.
What I'm saying is, if the culverts collapse, you don't know.
But you could work one, one side of the street versus the other.
But what I'm getting at is the Southern, if something happens to the Southern Estates.
The Southern Estates, I understand, okay.
Whereas if we tied Southern Estates in, if something happens to that.
Okay.
Culvert, then they could still get home or leave home.
We were more worried about the school than, than the culverts, but that was, that was our issue.
And, and, and that, you know, the principal brought, brought up some good points, and that's a, an issue we can't predict, is how big Covenant Christian's going to be, how big is it going to grow, how many people are going to be walking back and forth, how many people we're putting on the streets, crossing the boulevard. That's my, that's my only concern about tie-ins. Not so much with neighborhoods, but this, this particular subdivision with the, with the, with the school at the beginning of it, you've got a lot more traffic coming in that neighborhood now than you have in the adjoining neighborhood. Because you're basically adding an additional, traffic-wise, like a 600-home property, in my opinion.
I'd say 50% of that neighborhood would want to go that way.
And then you're going to add the rest of the flow. I mean, it's up to you guys which, um, which I want to make a motion for. When is that study going to be complete?
During engineering phase.
Well, I mean, and just to clarify, I mean, the engineer, when they would submit the engineering phase, I mean, after, you have one year from the time you receive preliminary approval to submit engineering phase. So, you know, that's the timeframe with which they're working. I don't think conceptual, I'm not sure if conceptual has an expiration date, but preliminary does of a year. So that's some.
We plan on moving on.
I imagine they're going to want to move pretty quick. The name of the game right now is, is let's get some, we need housing in Terrebonne Parish.
Absolutely.
More than ever. So I want to state that clearly. So, I mean, we're, but we're also want to make sure it's safe and, and done right. I'm also just, just kind of looking at the recommendations and also thinking about, you know, having it done at the engineering phase. You know, I'm recommending that it be tied in. I, I feel strongly that, that that's just what should happen. But, you know, if, well, let's say that they agree to that condition, so it moves forward, and then they come in at engineering, but the, the study from DOTD says not to. Okay, so then what about this condition of approval? Because that's how it got to prelim, so they would have to go back to remove that condition of approval. Or, I mean, I don't want to tell you guys, you know, how to vote, but, you know, you could, I mean, this is my recommendation, but you could certainly modify staff recommendations to say, all right, if you're feeling, if you're in agreement about tying it in, but you're also concerned about the DOTD results of the study, and what if they recommend, we prefer you don't, you know, it could be that, and Eric, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong with this, but it could be contingent upon, you know, that not being, contingent upon the DOTD study, right?
Would we send, would we send to DOTD was this layout?
Not tied in.
Not tying it in.
Yeah, so, yeah, with tying it in, you'd have to resend it. Yeah. Okay. Well, that helps. That, yeah, never mind, I guess is the way to say it. No, what DOTD is reviewing is that layout, not tying into Sugar Creek Street. So if it passes with these conditions as is, then the developer would have to resubmit to DOTD with this revised, with a revised plan showing the tie-in.
They may not want to tie it, I, you know.
Well, then they'll have both, and they can, you know, they'll be able to comment on that. Well, then they'll have both, and they can, you know, they'll be able to comment on that.
So would they have to take upon the staff recommendations to tie it in, they are returning without?
No, they would re-submit a new, a new drawing to DOTD showing it tying in. But at, at that point, then DOTD can look at it with both and say, okay, well, what's this, what's the count? What does this intersection look like, not having tied in versus tying it in, tying that subdivision in?
So based on what he submitted to the state, DOTD doesn't agree with what you have here?
Correct.
I don't need a motion either way.
Well, no, I mean, i- if, if, if it goes through as per staff recommendations, then they would submit the revised plan to DOTD and then simply wait for that to come back, and then whatever they present to us at engineering. I mean, tying it in, I mean, you're, you're gonna lose maybe one lot. You know, it's a slight adjustment to the layout, so I don't, it certainly wouldn't be something that would require to come back, if that's what you're asking, yeah. I mean, that, there are times when there's a shift or a change from preliminary to engineering. Um, and generally speaking, if it doesn't result in a significant modification to the road layout or an increase in the number of lots, then we move, and we pointed out at engineering, hey, by the way, this changed. But if there's an increase in the number of lots, then it goes back.
Have we had any developments? Principal from the school made a reference to looking on the maps, all the neighborhoods are single entry, single exit. Has there been any developments in this particular area that they've tied in recently that, I mean, that, well, have we done this with pretty much everybody?
Well, out here, um, I mean, you think about what else is here? You have North Park subdivision that last meeting that got approval for, uh, another phase. But they just don't have any neighbors, developed neighbors that they can tie into. Um, I mean, there's developments on the sides, but they don't have stubouts or, or, or it's just still vacant land. And then Imperial Landing, which was another one, I mean, they're, they're tying into themselves, really. Um, so...
But the neighbors didn't want those cross streets either, and they, they eliminated them.
On which one?
Imperial Landing. They didn't wanna tie into Louisiana. They purposely didn't tie in.
Oh, well, that, that, they're, they're coming in with another phase that's tying into Louisiana Drive on the north side, future phase.
All right, never mind.
And yeah, you talked to the residents on Louisiana Drive today, they're, they're not happy right now, anyway.
I heard.
Yeah. And Louisiana Drive is, um, or at least the front part is, uh, it's not, that road isn't up to handle that kinda traffic load, too.
That's, with the tie-in or without the tie-in?
I would go without the tie-in.
I think staff recommend, staff recommend tie-in. So you're making a motion without the tie-in? Do we have a motion?
So, so it'd be the service availability letter from pollution control? The, only that condition? Okay? Does he need to restate it that way, or?
Yeah, I would restate it as, 'cause you don't want conditional approval. You want without...
Right, right. Just restate it. Approval on the condition of the submittal of a service availability letter from...
Yeah, it's not, not your condition, so that's right.
Right, his.
Sorry, just stated like that, I guess.
So...
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Rogers? We have a second by Ms. Ellander? All in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item two, Emerson Lakes Phase One, Lot seven through eleven, Block one A, re-division of Lots eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Mr. Rembert?
Yes, Ken Rembert, representing Pete Land Properties. Um, this, uh, Emerson Lakes Phase One is one of these, uh, planned unit developments. Uh, it's located right across the street from, uh, Ansley Place Apartments, uh, on Emerson Drive. Anyway, we, uh, we have presented the plan, and, uh, we've submitted it as a PUD this time, and we have all the utilities that are available, pollution control, uh, at least the, uh, the sewers are right there in front. Um, we have a drainage study that was done, and, uh, I think Joan had some conditions on that as far as, uh, uh, receipt of the reservoir mitigation, and I think that's been handled, has it not, Joan? By Milford and Associates? Yes, okay. And, uh, fire hydrant protection is there, and, and we'd like to see about, uh, getting this little development approved, if we might.
Anyone from the public? Second call public, third final call public? Motion by Ms. Ellander, second by Mr. Loner, all in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Administration?
Sir, uh, this is a minor subdivision process D, PUD, to create five lots of record for the placement of four townhomes, including variance requests from the minimum lot width and size requirements. But with the application having been resubmitted as a PUD, there's no need for the variances as all lots exceed the minimum lot width requirement and minimum size requirement of thirty-six hundred feet. Uh, proposed development meets and exceeds the two-hundred-square-foot recreation per unit minimum as each unit has a rear patio. There's also some common areas identified. Um, the units have the required off-street parking of two per unit, and the front setbacks are twenty-six foot or more, and the proposed rear setback is fifteen. Um, before I get too, too, uh, further along, I mean, this is, you know, we had this similar item just before on zoning commission, because PUDs in zoned areas, you have to get both zoning commission approval and, uh, planning commission approval. And the, the requirements are essentially the same, except the zoning has the requirements for the sidewalks and for the, um, uh, now I can't think of what that other condition, oh, the visitor and, uh, RV parking. Uh, that's why you don't see that listed on here, 'cause this is a planning commission item, so I can't require that of this application, so I just wanna make sure everyone's clear on that. Uh, the approval of the drainage cals was received from Terrebonne Parish Engineering, conditioned upon receipt of the reservoir mitigation. The community sewer is private, be serviced by Terrebonne Sewer System. Fire hydrants are positioned within the requirements along Emerson Drive, and municipal addresses are depicted on the plat. Not all utility letters have been received. Um, public hearing sign was posted, and all adjacent property owners have been notified. Uh, staff recommends approval on the submittal of Terrebonne Parish Engineering approval letter and all utility letters.
Okay, thank you. Staff recommendation? We have a motion, a motion by Mr. Loner, second by Mr. Soudier to approve as per staff recommendations. All in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item three, Emerson Lake Phase Two, Lots one through five, Block eight, re-division, Lot thirteen. Mr. Rembert?
Yes, Ken Rembert, representing, uh, representing Pete Land Properties LLC. Uh, this is another, uh, PUD, we've changed this to a PUD, uh, development, uh, planned unit development. And, uh, we have the same situation here as we did on the last one. Uh, we do have, um, the, uh, drainage cals, we have, uh, you know, fire hydrant protection, we have, uh, sewage available, all the utilities available. And, uh, with, with one exception, it was discovered today by me, myself, was pointed out to me that, uh, there's a wider, uh, drainage servitude along one side of this property, and we'd like to have a conditional approval subject to us, uh, making arrangements to have that servitude reduced uh, in the future. Uh, we'll do what we have to do to reduce the, the drainage servitude, such as perhaps, um, coveting the, uh, the servitude in order to get that permission.
Anyone from the public? Second call public, third final call public? Motion by Ms. Ellander, second by Mr. Rogers, all in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the applicant is requesting approval for a minor subdivision process D, PUD, to create six lots of record for placement of five townhomes. Um, with the application then resubmitted as PUD, there's no need for the variances as all lots exceed the minimum lot width requirement and the size requirement. Uh, the proposed development meets and exceeds the two-hundred-square-foot recreation per unit minimum. Uh, they have the required off-street parking, and the front setbacks are twenty-six foot or more, and the rear setbacks are fifteen. PUD requirements state that no more than four townhomes shall be under a common roof, so the building permit architectural plans will need to demonstrate at least one of the proposed five units is under a separate roof. Uh, the approval of the drainage cals, uh, was received, or drainage cals was received from Terrebonne Parish Engineering, conditioned upon receipt of a reservoir, uh, mitigation proof and submittal of revised plat showing the correct servitude. Mr. Ken, that's what you were referring to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, the community sewer is private, will be serviced by Terrebonne Sewer System. Fire hydrants are positioned within the requirements along Emerson Drive. Uh, municipal addresses are depicted on the plat, but not all utility letters have been received. Public hearing sign was posted, and all adjacent property owners were notified. Staff recommends approval on the following conditions, submittal of an engineering approval letter and submittal of all utility letters.
As per staff? A motion by Mr. Soudier, second by Mr. Loner, to approve as per staff recommendations. All in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item H, application new business subdivision of property belonging to Baskel Heers into Tracks B one, B two, B three. Ernie Basrell? Name and address, please.
Joshua Swallow, seven one six Highway three way, Tibbetto, Louisiana. I'm representing Mr. Ernie Basrell and the Baskel Heers to subdivide this piece of property. There's four camps, this, it's located outside the protection level down in Montague, and there's four camps on this property. One camp has been torn down, a couple of them damaged from the hurricane, and they just wanted to, the property was owned by twenty heirs, and so they wanted to sell each portion of the camp. Uh, each camp get their own lot, except one camp is being, the southern camp is being torn down, so, and they just wanna divide it out, three lots for three camps, so.
Okay. Anyone from the public on this matter? Second call public, third final call public? Move by Mr. Rogers?
Second.
Second by Mr. Soudier, all in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting approval for a minor subdivision process D to create three lots of record along South Madison Canal Road in Montague for single-family residential use. Um, it's located at twenty-three thirty-nine, twenty-three forty-one, twenty-three forty-three, and twenty-three forty-five South Madison Canal Road. All adjacent property owners have been notified. Uh, fire hydrant is located within the distance requirements and drainage cals are not required. The Department of Health has issued a letter of no objection for the individual treatment plans. Municipal addresses have been depicted on the plat. Uh, not all service availability letters have been received. Staff recommends approval on the condition of submittal of all service, uh, utility service availability letters.
A motion by Mr. Loner, second by Mr. Rogers, to approve as per staff recommendation. All in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item two, Tracks A and B, re-division of property belonging to Wayne B. Harris. Mr. Rembert?
Yes, uh, Ken Rembert, uh, six thirty-five School Street, Homer, Louisiana, representing Mr. Wayne Harris. Mr. Harris has an eleven-acre tract of land, uh, located on, uh, Byside Drive down in the Smith Ridge area. Uh, he would like to, uh, he has a sale for three acres of property in the, in the, you know, front portion of this eleven acres. He's gonna maintain or rather keep a twenty-five-foot entrance to the property in the rear of it. We have, uh, uh, you know, letters from Pollution Control saying they can serve this property, and, uh, uh, we have fire hy- hydrant protection, we have utility letters that came in saying they can serve the, uh, property. Uh, the only person, the only, uh, utility company that didn't respond was, uh, South Coast Gas, but I guess anything that they do with it could be total electric. Uh, we could put that note on the, that note that, uh, maybe perhaps gas is not available. But, uh, anyway, uh, we'd like to see about, uh, getting this approved, if we might.
Anyone here from the public on this matter? Second call public, third and final call public? Motion by Ms. Ellander?
Second.
Second by Mr. Loner? All in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Administration?
Well, Mr. Ken, so if you put a note on the plat that says gas service is not available, what happens if gas is brought in at a later date? I'm, I'm asking, I'm curious.
I was just, we have put that on the, uh, maps in the past where gas wasn't available. If it comes in and it is available later, uh, so much is better, I suppose.
Yeah.
You know, we're just saying it's not available at its time.
At the time of the plat?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's a pretty good idea, actually. Add that on, okay. Uh, the applicant's requesting a minor subdivision process D to create two lots of record along Byside Drive and Chauvin vicinity for single-family residential use. The proposed minor subdivision is located at forty-seven seventy-nine Byside Drive. All adjacent property owners have been notified. The lot configuration and layout meet Parish subdivision regulation standards. Drainage cals have been submitted and approved by Terrebonne Parish Engineering. A letter of no objection has been received from Terrebonne Parish Pollution Control. A fire hydrant is located within the distance requirements. Uh, municipal addresses need to be depicted on the plat. All service availability letters have been submitted, with the exception of gas. Staff recommends approval on the conditions that municipal addresses are provided on the plat and a note stating that gas service is not available be stated on the plat.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we, um, approve this, the conditional approval that they revise the, the plat and add, um...
We have a motion by Ms. Ellander, second by Mr. Loner, as per staff recommendation. All in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, Parcels eleven A through eleven C, a re-division of property belonging to Four Point Holdings Incorporated. Mr. Rembert?
Yes, sir. Uh, this property's, uh, partially located on, uh, Highway one eighty-two in the, in the Barrios area of, of Homer. It also has frontage on a s- street in the rear called July Street. And what the owner, Mr. Falls, uh, would like to do is, uh, who, by the way, is the client, Leonard Falls, uh, he would like to make two small lots, uh, facing on July Street. And, uh, we have, you know, the letters, uh, from the utility company saying they can serve it. Uh, we have, uh, pollution control letter. Uh, we, I don't know if we, Joan, did we get anything? We haven't, we, we don't have our, uh, drainage study complete. And also, it turns out we're nine inches short of, of meeting the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot distance to the hydrant, so I need to ask for a variance on that the next meeting. meeting. Ask, I ask that after we have our public hearing, that we just table it till next month's meeting, okay?
Anyone from the public? Just come up to the podium, please. State your name and address, please.
Clinton DeHart, I live at 505 July Drive, which is directly across from this property. So if this is approved, once he sells this property, whoever buys it can build any type of house that they want on it, am I correct? There's no stipulations that's going to be, it's going to be like a little subdivision or something, he can do what he wants with it?
It's zoned single-family residential.
Okay.
So they'd only be allowed to build one house per lot, and then there are setback requirements as far as the front, sides, and rear setbacks, but if what you're talking about is, is the style of home, we don't have...
No, okay, plus is the, the lots of, he told me that the lot was going to be the same as mine. My lot is 60 wide, 110 deep, but I don't think it's that.
These are 60-foot wide, each of them. The depth is just over like 100.12.
Okay, so the houses won't be, in other words, I'm just looking, you know, I don't want the value of my house to go down, depending on what they're going to build.
Right there. Well, the minimum lot size requirement for a single-family residential is 6,000 square foot.
Okay.
When it's served by community, yes, by community sewer, these, both of these proposed lots are 6,000 square foot.
Okay.
But on the plat, and you're happy, I mean, look at it if you want, but they, it also shows the building envelope when you take into account a 20-foot front, 25-foot rear, and five on the side, so there's, even with the lots at 6,000 square feet, there's still sufficient room to build a house without encroaching into any of the required setbacks.
So what's the variance, he said, that he needs on this property?
Oh, well, right now, the only fire-
Because there's no fire hydrant, it's at the end of the street.
Yes, and across.
Across, yeah, it's like on June Drive.
That's right. If you're on the other side of June, .8 feet is how many, how, that's how far enough, yes, right, we're talking eight inches or so.
Yeah, it's at, you got to cross June, and then it's right there.
If you're on the other side of, on this side of June Drive, then you wouldn't need the variance.
Okay.
You know, as far as the size square foot home that you're going to be able to fit, I mean, most of the newer lot subdivisions, like the, you know, the Sugar Woods and newer Summerfield, the lot sizes range around 6,500 square foot to 7,200.
Okay.
So you're, you're still looking at a, I would think, a 2,000, 1,800, 2,000 square foot home on these.
Yeah. I mean, I have no problems with Leonard doing what he's doing, it's just that I just want to make sure that what's being done is not going to devalue any part of the neighborhood. I know people want to live there because it's in Mulberry Sub, you know, school district, and, you know, I'm sure it's going to sell pretty quickly, but, you know, I just don't want it to affect, because I live directly across the street from this right here, so.
I, you know, I don't, I can't speak, I'm not going to speak for the commission as to, you know, what it may or may not do to impact property values.
Okay.
But, I mean, a newer construction home, I mean comps usually go by per square foot, so.
Okay, I just want to- Okay.
Right, so, yeah, subdivision covenants, you know, the parish, those are civil matters, so the parish and oil planning commission can enforce subdivision covenants, but they, they do exist, so that's something that, you know, a development would have to adhere to unless, unless they've expired. I mean, I know that Barrios is-
So he's got this driveway that goes directly across his property, right here, okay? So I know he wants to keep part of it, and I know part of it's going to be taken for this lot right here. He couldn't make a street there, can he, with?
No.
That would have to be approved.
Still a driveway.
Still a driveway, okay.
Square footage, a minimum per house, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Your house is a certain square footage, so, I mean, like they said, you know, the-
Yeah, my house is over 2,000, you know.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm sure that's going to follow suit.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Liner, you're referring to the covenants? Yeah, a lot of covenants have minimum size requirements for homes, so.
Okay.
Just keep an eye on that.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you. Second call public, third and final call public? Motion by Ms. Ellender, second by Mr. Soudier, closed public. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Administration?
I recommend we table to allow time, the applicant time to, or table at the develop, as per the developer's request, to allow time for drainage cals and the revision to include, the application to include the variance from the fire hydrant distance requirement, and provide proper public notice, and for municipal addresses to be placed on the plat. Yes.
Make a motion.
Is that right, Mr. Ken, next regular meeting?
Yes, yes, please.
As per staff's recommendation.
As per the developer's request.
Uh, developer's request. To table it.
Motion by Mr. Liner, second by Mr. Rogers, to table as per developer's request till next scheduled meeting, December 16th, 2021. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rembert. Item four, parcels 11A through 11C, a redivision of property belonging to Four Point Holdings Incorporated.
Yes, Ken Rembert, representing, well, 635 School Street, Homer, Louisiana, representing Four Point Holdings. They have a tract of land that's way out in the marsh, along a bayou called Wax Bayou. There is no access to it other than by boat, and it's out in the marsh. There are no utilities available to it. We did get a letter from Board of Health saying it was okay if somebody would want to build a camp there, but they would have to have a generator, they would have to have a cistern, so there is no plan by these people to build anything out there. They own it, the company owns it, and they would like to dissolve the company and own each a piece of it separately in their own names, so that's the only purpose for dividing it, not to use it, but just so they can each-
Right.
Have a piece and dissolve that company. So we'd like to see about getting it approved as three parcels instead of just one parcel. Again, it's marshal land.
Right. Anyone from the public? Second call public, third and final call public? Moved by Mr. Rogers, second by Mr. Soudier, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any needs? Motion passes. Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting approval for a minor subdivision process D to create three lots of record along Wax Bayou for proposed camp sites. The proposed minor subdivision, it's west of the Homer Nav Canal in the Dulack vicinity and accessible by boat. All adjacent property owners have been notified, drainage cals aren't required. A letter of no objection has been received from the Department of Health. Municipal addresses need to be depicted on the plat. I'm laughing how crazy that sounds, but believe it or not, the assessor records do indicate the physical address of the current tract is 9576 Grand Cayo Road. Can you believe that?
And it's not even, and it's not near Grand Cayo.
I don't want to get it.
I don't either.
I don't get it. Staff recommends approval on the condition of municipal addresses being depicted on the plat, or parish 911 addressing, saying that those addresses are not available. Let me add that.
I can talk to Dominique.
Talk to Dominique and see, how about upon submittal of a letter from the parish 911 addressing?
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers, second by Ms. Ellender, to approve as per staff. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
And you know, it, it may be, I mean, one of those things, 911, is, they issue the addresses.
Yes.
So if you do have a camp on one of those structures and something happens at the camp in the emergency, heck, even the sheriff has, they have boats, so they'll need to know where to go, so maybe that's why they do it.
Latitude and longitude.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rembert. Item five, Cypress Gordon Town Homes, Delta Coast Consultants?
Good evening, Kevin Rezo with Delta Coast Consultants, 631 South Hollywood Road. We're representing Reshaw Development. This is an application for conceptual preliminary approval for a major subdivision, planned unit development townhome subdivision. Property's located between Main Street and Martin Luther King, just above West Side Boulevard. The access to the property is off of Main Street.
Okay. Anyone from the public here regarding this matter? Yes, sir, come on up. Name and address, please.
My name is Kenneth Crossland, I live at 218 Bel Air Drive. The subdivision that he's talking about is in my backyard. There's a retention pond there. I have no objection of Mr. Reshaw building this said subdivision. What I'm asking for is the planning committee to look more into the drainage part of it. Since that retention pond has been there, my house has come almost completely flooded. I mean, I, I came within a half inch of the water getting into my weep holes. My house is probably 47 feet from the edge of the pond. The pond is 20 feet from my, from, from the pond to my back fence is 20 feet, and from the fence to my house is 27. I have, on a May flood, been knee-deep standing at my fence. So, uh, we've never had flooding on that street until that retention pond was built. I've lived there 23 years. Not only me, but my neighbor next to me, and my neighbors across the street, since they built West Side Boulevard, all that water drains towards our pond. Up where Little Caesar's is on Martin Luther King, at the end of my street is that high, so all the water from the end of the street goes into a drainage that comes back to the pond. So I'm getting drainage this way, getting drainage this way. Where he wants to build has a levee, and I'm on the lower end, so water goes to the least resistance, which is my yard. If you're going to build 52 more houses with concrete that's going to drain into this pond, I'm going to be flooded. So all I'm asking, and I have pictures I could show you, I was at the last meeting, and I submitted pictures. This meeting, I, I didn't have time to get any, but I could happily show you on my phone. I'm not lying. All I'm asking is that you look into this. Now, Mr. Reshaw has assured me that the planning, the drainage committee said everything's in order, but I can tell you it's not. It is not in order. So all I'm asking is that you look more into it. My representative, what's his, Gerald?
Michelle.
Michelle, has been to my house, well, he's been to my neighbor's house, when this was happening, so he's, he's physically seen what's going on. So I would ask that you would talk to him, and like I said, I submitted some photos at the last meeting that he, if you could, look at those, and just be considerate of, you know, the, the people in, in my little, Bel Air Drive is just a one-way road. There's, you know, but there's people back there that, you know, every time it rains, we get frantic. So if you're going to build 52 more houses over here, the drainage has to go somewhere, and that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Second call public? Ma'am, did you want to speak earlier? That's okay.
My name is Karen Petrie, and I live at 220 Bel Air Drive, next door to them. I purchased my house two years ago, and I've almost been flooded three times in two years because of the retention pond. It all comes straight into that pond, and it goes straight into our houses on the end of Bel Air Drive. I have no problems either with him building 55-plus older condos. I think it's going to be a great idea, but we've got to do something with that pond. It's, it's got to be more drainage involved in that. So, other than that, I don't have any issues either with him building that, but the drainage has got to be corrected before we can move on. Two years, almost flooded three times. Those houses have been there since 1962, never flooded, never had any issues on that street, until they built the big hotel, Martin Luther King, and all of it just floods right there. We have a little bitty drainage taking the water out, but we have these big, huge culverts of water coming in, and it's not that big. Big enough for alligators, but we don't need any more water. We dread the rain. So, yeah, that's just the drainage. That would be the issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Third and final call public? Motion by Ms. Ellender, second by Mr. Rogers, closed public. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I just want to say something to what y'all just said, you know, being on this board, I don't know, two years now, I guess, it just seems like we still have this same issue where these older homes are paying the price for these new subdivisions coming in, and I don't know if we need to do better engineering studies, if the studies are only really capitalizing on the area that the new construction is happening and not really taking consideration of the older homes next door when we, when we doing these drainage studies. Is there, are they really taking consideration all the houses around it? Are we just the, the new construction only? Because it just seems like it's happened in every meeting, we, we're having another, you know, residents coming in front of us saying they're flooding because of the new neighborhoods. What can we do different? Because it seems like we're constantly running across this. Like, and even in the engineering aspect of it, like, I just think there needs to be accountability somewhere on the engineering. If it fails the drainage, we've got to be able to come back and hold somebody accountable. Just my opinion.
Well, I know, and Joan, correct me if I'm wrong, but when engineering phase is submitted, there, there is the historic outfall, and so the, the purpose of the drainage plans that are submitted are to prove up that the rate of flow from this subdivision is at or even less than the pre-development flows. Is that, am I right there, Joan? But, but that's only looking at the property within the subdivision, right? You're not, it's not considering the surrounding properties, is it?
You do look at the surrounding properties to see if they are flowing across you. But if the surrounding properties aren't heading towards you, then you don't have to really look at them too hard. But if they are draining to you, then you have to address it.
But at the, the outfall, where the proposed development, the, the pre-existing outfall, pre-development, that's, if that's the same point, that's what you're looking at, to see if that rate is the same, or less?
Yes.
So, so new development draining into older neighborhoods, you only have to look at it if the older neighborhood is draining into the new neighborhood?
No, what I'm saying is, you have to look at, including the, if you're draining through the older neighborhood, you have to look at it, and if the older neighborhood is draining towards you, you have to look at it. But if the two are separate, then you're only limiting your runoff, and you don't have to address theirs.
Now- Well, and, and, and to their point, though, and, and I know from talking with Parish President Dove, is there's a nu, number of projects currently underway and to come, now, before he leaves off- And to come bef- now, before he leaves office, okay, these should be completed, which will improve the drainage for that entire area, not just this subdivision or Bel Air, but that region as a whole. The acquisition of the prop- or the donation of the property on the North Sonus Van Road, the old Shell property. And subsequent property acquisitions that the parish is picking up, coupled with some of the other improvements to the area, pump stations and, and, and things are really gonna change in a good way. The develop- or the drainage for that entire area. I wish we had, you know, the ability to, to present, and maybe that's something that we could look to do, is, is maybe do some sort of, cause there's a lot going on, guys, a lot going on.
Sure.
And it would be advantageous to have some presentation to you all so that you can make those kinds of decisions with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just heartbreaking to hear, you know, month after month, we're getting the same type of story with the, you know, the people that live there long are having water issues, and the new neighborhood's fine. It's just getting a little old.
Well, and, and I, I completely agree, and it, and it also is, is difficult because, you know, here we are at conceptual and preliminary. And all of you served on this commission with, with Bud, I mean, that's one of his big things is, well, we don't have that drainage information yet, cause that's in the engineering phase. But what we're still intending to do with our subdivision regulations from a procedural standpoint is modify some of that. So that we can have, at the time of preliminary, some preliminary drainage plans as part of that. But in exchange for asking the developers and engineers to provide that information upfront in preliminary, which they're not required to do now, that would eliminate the need for it to come back to the planning commission for review of engineering. It still has to happen. They still submit engineering. It's just an administrative review, unless there's some variance or something that does need to come back to the planning commission for a decision. But if it's engineers reviewing the engineer plans, and they're just making sure that everything is as it should be, even if they do have a punch list. That can still be addressed administratively, which would help reduce, not only does it reduce the number of meetings and, and that the, and, and, that, and applications, items, I guess is a better word, that go before you all. But it also gives an opportunity for the public who come in and ha- can have a real discussion about drainage, because the, the basic information we have. You know, the engineers are prepared to talk about it, cause they've done all the, I, not the, the minor, you know, the minutia stuff, the small stuff, the details, but at least generally speaking, they have a, you can talk about it. So that's something we're looking to do. I think that's some, that's something that most people seem to be, that I've talked to about it, including past commissioners and staff and so forth that have been supportive of.
What's the process to change it?
Well, we presented to you all. I've got South Central Plannings working on the proposed revisions to the regulations. So we would bring it to you all under, present it under a staff report. Like, we could talk about it at a subdivision review committee meeting, but I don't think it's really necessary. We could bring it straight to staff report, present it to you all, call for a public hearing, so the planning commission has a public hearing on that, then you all would make a recommendation to the parish council. Say, hey, guys, we really think this is a good idea, but ultimately, the council makes that decision.
I guess one, one thing that I'd like to say is, you know, you tell us that there's things that are gonna be done prior to parish president, you know, leaving office. That's all good, but if this development goes forward, in the meantime, once you start pouring concrete, water starts flowing. They're sitting there going, what do I do now? Because the, what we're looking forward to in, I don't know, a year, eighteen months? Slabs have been poured, and the project that you're telling us is gonna happen hadn't happened, and they got water in their house.
Yeah. Well, and I know, speaking with President Dove, he's aware of, of the situation in this, and I know he's spoken with Public Works about it. And it's possible that for the improvements that are being made at these other locations, these projects, that before they can go online, it's very possible that there may be some necessary improvements that have to happen to that subdivision, the existing subdivision, before those improvements come online, those future ones. So I, I think, you know, I can certainly take that back to, you know, administration and, and Public Works and see what we can do in anticipation of what's coming.
Yeah, I, I'm definitely interested in, you know, when they doing these studies, whether it's the engineer or, or the parish, just to try to get more of an area with, and again, I don't know what guidelines y'all have to go by as far as drainage. Obviously, y'all have certain guidelines to go by, but maybe that needs to be increased. Maybe we need to, you know, increase our, our cover size even more than what it's called for. Like, I don't know what the process is on that, but maybe we're just not doing enough to help out the older neighborhoods. Again, the new neighborhoods seem fine, but it's always the older neighborhoods paying the, paying the price. So it just seems like there's something either parish or engineer that needs to change.
I was gonna tie in, I was gonna say what Jan did actually about, is there, maybe you can give the, a little bit of information on how to find out what type of factors are going on in that area? That way you can, uh, look into it in some way.
Sure.
Administration?
Well, the applicant is requesting conceptual and preliminary approval for a major subdivision process C to create a PUD for fifty-two lots of record for the placement of townhomes in the Bayou Kane vicinity for single-family residential use. PUD is centered around an existing retention pond that also doubles as a recreation area. The applicant went before the Homer Board of Adjustment and received setback variances from the twenty-five-foot side and rear yard setbacks for those lots along the perimeter. On the north end along, at that northeast corner, next to the Bayou Kane, and then on the south end, next to the subdivision. The remaining requirements for lot sizes and placement meet PUD and subdivision regulation standards. Bayou Kane Fire Department has indicated that the turnaround does not meet fire code requirements. I've just got that, I forwarded that email to you today. That came in, I guess, late yesterday, but I haven't had a chance to track all my emails lately. Not all utility letters have been submitted. The proposed street names have not been submitted. Vehicular circulation plan indicates approximately three hundred and four average daily trips at West Main Street. Staff will discuss the existing drainage concerns with administration and Public Works, and, and I can see if there's ways to inform public as part of that. The applicant provided documentation that the proper signposting was completed, and adjacent property owners have been notified. Although the applicant did go before the Board of Adjustment, this PUD will still need to go before the Zoning and Land Use Commission. Staff recommends approval on the following conditions: submittal of all utility letters, submittal of an approval letter from Bayou Kane Fire Department, and depiction of the proposed street na- approved, proposed street names on the plat.
Can we, can we make a, a motion to table it until we see the drainage studies on this?
The drainage study, their drainage studies?
Yeah.
Well, that's engineering phase, though, so.
So we can't hold it up, okay.
If you wanna see it, you need to approve it so it can go to engineering.
Gotcha. That's the way it's set up now.
Correct.
Make a motion. Motion by Mr. Rogers. Second by Ms. Ellender, approved as per staff recommendations. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item my staff report, low call regards to who have completed the annual ethics training course as required by state legislature and parish harassment, discrimination, diversity training for twenty twenty-one. I got one that's, uh.
Okay. All right, for the ethics training, it's the same as it has been. The only ones that have not yet completed the annual ethics training are Ross Burgord and Robbie Liner. And then for the sexual harassment training, that was what I gave y'all all flash drives on, and it can also be found on the parish website now. But actually, no, it's on the internet, I think. So, yeah, but I had given y'all all flash drives to be able to do that video and that training. The ethics, okay, I must have never gotten your certificate then. You, you should be able to print a certificate like this after you do the ethics training, and you need to email that to me. Yeah, you can log back into your account and it'll, you can print it or save it and just email it to me. And so for sexual harassment, I only have that Mr. Thibodeau and Reverend Gray have completed the sexual harassment training. You're supposed to turn back in, the, there was a, a little affidavit or something that you have to sign and return the flash drive to me so we could use it again next year. Yeah, I can give you, cause I have, the only one I have back is Reverend Gray's. Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah. Yeah, I think I have Reverend Gray's somewhere in my office, but again, it's all under tarps.
Motion by Ms. Ellender, administrative approvals number one through eleven, second by Mr. Sudiya, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Another item K, is there any reports from subdivision regulation committee? No meeting? Okay, moving on. Planning commissioners comments? Any?
I, I just wanted to point out, December is the, our next, the regular meeting in December. They will need to, at that time, are they not gonna be voting on the officers for twenty twenty-two?
I was just about to bring that up, actually.
Okay, I'll shut up.
So with that said, this is possibly gonna be my last night as chairman. Well, my last meeting, because I'm gonna be having a surgery in early December, and so there's a, there's an issue that I might not be able to make the sixteen. If so, I will have them wheel me in, put me on the corner somewhere. But, uh, other than that, if this is my last meeting, I enjoyed being the chair and having Becky supply me with all my cheat notes each time to keep me, keep me somewhat confined to what we're supposed to be doing. Uh, absolutely. I don't think, any comments from the public? Second call public, third and final call public. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Rogers, second by Mr. Liner, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.